Okay, guys, we are live. This is our work session in preparation for our first meeting in August. Can you believe it's August 8th month? We're almost to the year. It's amazing. And this is going to be dedicated, the first part of it will be dedicated to some budget discussion. We are going to have to advertise at this next board meeting and we need to decide what we're going to advertise for. So I will turn it over to the budget chair because that will be the preponderance of our, of our morning, I believe. So Alden Sisstron.
And I'm going to give you a real high level overview. Webb is available and Lisa with, if there's specific questions, if you want to drill down in a number, anything like that. But as budgets go, this one has turned out to be pretty straightforward. No, no real big things. If, if we weren't expanding a couple of services, primarily the FUSIS camera program at the police department and the possible reopening of Fire Station 5, we wouldn't be talking about a tax increase at all. We're going to be talking about the smallest possible tax increase this year. So, starting with revenues, we're projecting more than we, we had last year. We, our assessed values for property went up two and a half percent. We have looked at our collection percentage and that allowed us to take our projected ad valorem tax revenues up a little bit, up a little bit. So that's, that's the increase that you see there, primarily assessed values. Sales taxes, I'd like to talk about that a little bit. We saw a spike in sales taxes last month that we think is attributed to having tournaments at Cornerstone. We expect that to continue this year. And we have, we have learned a painful lesson over the last year or so, that when we approved the documents for the revitalization project at the Old Garin site, they qualified for a MIRA reimbursement, the Mississippi Economic Redevelopment Act reimbursement. And as part of that, all the sales taxes divert to the developer until that commitment is paid off. We think that that commitment will pay off early in fiscal year '25. So the increase in sales taxes that you see there, we have budgeted due to starting to receive triangle crossing sales taxes and an increase in, in sales taxes for Cornerstone. When we, when we started with Cornerstone and I don't, I haven't gotten an updated number, I haven't asked for an updated number. When we started with Cornerstone, the, the economic impact projection was $15 million. It's probably 20 now or more. But $15 million of direct economic impact would generate about $180,000 in sales taxes coming back to, to the city of Starville. The other increase in revenue is interest income. And we've tried to be conservative with that because while we're earning more than we had earned in the past, we're expecting rates to go down next month and possibly again a month, a couple more times over the next year or so. So those are the big changes in the revenues. And as, as always, the driver for how much money we have available to spend is property taxes and sales taxes. So that, that gets us through the revenues. I'm only going to touch the-
Well, before we leave the revenues, and talking about the TIF piece of it, we have not been asked yet to do anything with, with the TIF-
Right.
-that will be coming our way. But when we do, that's still not a full recovery for the developer of the, of the TIF amount.
Exactly.
So there'll still be some measure of that TIF that will be available to us to budget for in the coming years.
We agreed, we agreed to pledge 50% of the sales tax to the repayment of a TIF bond and to size it based on 75%, but to pledge 50% for payment. So, and then the, the incremental ad valorem taxes.
So when we get that bump, we will get it for a little bit until we issue bonds.
We'll get a full bump for a little bit. We'll issue bonds. We've already begun the process of building the debt reserve account that's required for those bonds. And we'll, we'll, we'll see a slight step back in what our net, net sales tax numbers-
I just kind of wanted to highlight that because I think that as, as we are building those reserves to cover those bonds, we will be, we are, we are being fiscally, fiscally prudent in that sense.
We always try to be fiscally prudent.
I understand. I want to highlight it. It's worth, worth highlighting.
I appreciate that. Over in IT, you'll see that there's a, a line in there that is called debt service on here, but it's actually lease payments and that sort of thing. And, and that's where we've put the $140,000 that would cover the increm, the, the new cameras for the FUSIS system.
Okay. And this one's got 179, 730. Okay, all right.
There's some other, some other little things that are in there. And you'll see some little fluctuations between capital outlay and debt service. Webb is, can address that.
I'm trying to clean up and get stuff in the correct category. In the past, we've kind of thrown stuff into after that category and kind of shifted stuff into the correct category, especially when we have the audit that everything just flows everywhere. So there's like, just some discrepancies of where stuff landing in which category.
And you'll, you'll notice that, that capital outlay in IT went down by, by $50,000. So it's, it's up in debt service now.
It's just being moved in twenty categories.
Gotcha. Okay.
It's, it's a recategory, reclassification.
It's not somebody looking at it as an asset or a-
And now they're looking at it, yeah, differently than way back when.
Okay.
So, so $140,000, which was the annual projection for what FUSIS cameras would cost us. The next big bump in expenses that you see is down in HR, and that is the Stennis Study salary increase. And if, I understand that, that there is an average increase that, that touches, I think, almost every employee. Some, some are going to be higher than others because of the market. These are market-driven, data-driven surveys. But that's where that sits. And then down in the police department, we've added two positions to staff the Arctic Room, the Resource Technology Information Center. Did I get part of it right?
Oh, that is close. Real time.
Real time research. Okay. Real time information center.
Real time intelligence, right?
I've got one out of four. Some days are like that. But, so we've added two people there and we've budgeted them for a full year. And I'm, I'm telling you, I'm stressing the full year because we're going to come back to that when we get to the bottom line. The next two big changes that you see in the police department are strictly a reclassification of where something is recorded. On over to the fire department, we, we have not heard yet whether we'll receive the SAFER grant or not. We know that if we do receive it and, and we get to the position of opening Fire Station 5, that there will be some expenses related to that grant that are not reimbursed under the SAFER grant.
Do you have those built in? If, if we do that happen?
We have 60, we have $60,000 built in for this year because we, we felt like even if we get the grant, we will find out in October or so about that. It'll take a bit of time to hire people. We're, we're going to want to make sure that they stick with us a bit before we actually start reopening Fire Station 5. So we've got $60,000 in there this year for, for those unreimbursed expenses. There's nothing in grants this year. There might be at some point. If, if we receive a grant, we'll, we'll record that revenue when we, when we have that number. Under civil defense warning system, there are, are sirens are in ill repair and we're trying to get them-
That's a good way to put it.
That's polite. We're trying to replace those. And we've attempted to do this with grants and had, not had any luck with it. So-
We do still have an application out there for some, but there is no exact date of when we're doing it.
They've basically reached end of life.
Yes, they, they are. And some of them may be on life support. So-
There are six that were-
So there's some repairs to be made there. That'll be up in the contractual services line. And then we're budgeting to buy two civil defense sirens. And we will do that again until we get everything, over time, until we get everything caught up. Parks, that number is up. And that just reflects having Cornerstone come online. And with, with it comes additional expenses. And that's down under transfers, the very bottom line, Webb has put an explanation there for you about what those transfers are. Those are the transfers over to the funds for debt service, for capital projects. And this year we're adding a building maintenance fund so that the next time we have a roof that needs to be replaced, we'll have, we'll have some capital built up for that.
Or $350,000 air conditioning or whatever.
$350,000.
That's moving along, I guess.
Yes.
That'll be on the agenda later. So at the bottom line for the general fund, and the general fund is the one that's critical for Tuesday night because we have to, we have to advertise whether or not we'll have a proposed tax increase, how much it will be. At the moment, we're $226,735 short.
And 66 cents.
And 66 cents.
Those don't leave the six.
Short, which is about seven tenths of a mil. I've talked with Chief Ballard about realistically, and with Joel, realistically, how quickly we will phase in the FUSIS cameras and all that. And we've agreed that we could, we could cut that to 50%. So we, we can add back $140,000 and as beginning to phase in the, the FUSIS operations.
Is that clear? Now, have you, you already got that built into the schedule?
That's, no, no. So that, that would take that bottom line down to $86,000 in the deficit, a deficit of $86,000.
Chicken feed.
Well, it is. It is. It's a quarter of a mil, a quarter of a mil. And to put that in some-
I heard that. You said that out loud.
And to put that in some perspective, a quarter of a mil for my house, which is kind of the median house in the city of Starville, would be roughly $4 a year. To, to, I backed into, how much would a house have to be worth to have $100 of impact? And it would have to be approximately $4 million. So I think it's-
Well, Jeffrey, you're going to have to pay it, but I'm just saying.
So I think, I think if anybody complains, it's, it's not the amount, it's just the idea of, of taxes. So it's, it's, it's not a, it's de minimis at best. So.
Well, I mean, one of the things that we all talked about back when we first broached the subject of the cameras was that, you know, we were trying to lay it on one group of folks, the commercial builders or commercial strip owners, business owners. It came back to be it was a community-wide benefit. So with that being said, I think all the board was fairly comfortable that this was something that from that perspective ought to be spread out throughout the community. So to me, that's what that additional chicken feed money would go toward. So I, I think it's, I think it's a reasonable thing. And I do think it, it is imperative that we keep up with the, with the ability to protect our community.
Well, and, and you can pay for technology or you can pay for people. And, and technology-
This is a combination.
Technology can be very efficient and can allow you to use your people better. So I think it's important to-
Okay.
Any specific questions?
Well, is, did you, were you going to give Webb something to talk about because you mentioned him?
I said he's here if anybody has any specific questions.
Oh, is that what it was? Okay. I always thought you were going to toss it to him. I'm going to boil. Okay.
This is a question. This has got to be done for advertising purposes for the newspaper thing, get legal on that, on our utility department, utility fund stuff. We're going to chance to get back in and have a special meeting and look at the utility department and read all, all their revenue expenses and stuff. It's, it's a, it's a, it's twice bigger than ours.
And they are at the, at the back. The reason you'll see their budget at the back, they're different software. At this point, they're still in kind of a manual mode, but they're at the back. The reason it's not as critical that we get them reviewed for this meeting is because they are enterprise funds and they can change their rates at any point during the year. And at this point, I don't think we're talking about a, a rate change in the, in the very near future. So-
Well, I wouldn't go there.
Well, very near future being during this budget, this budget cycle. So, but, but yes, we can, we can go back through and talk, talk about it.
Would we have those new proposed, and we've got the director's room, projected revenue amounts via the study that we're having done with Jason Barrett to give us some kind of idea of what potentially the changes in the revenue would be based on this or this or this?
I, well, I'm going to, I'm going to start because I, I just sent Jason Barrett an email this, this past week about when we can have that work session. And so I was hoping that we would have it at, at the end of this month in preparation for the first meeting in September. I've not heard back from him yet, so I am hopeful that that will be the case. If not, we'll push it. But yes, he's going to come to, he's going to, he or whoever he used to use it in will come to a work session and we'll go through the same process we did last time when we looked at it. You know, you had, remember you had that really cool plan where you could plug in a number and it would shift it all appropriately? So yes, I think so. And Edward, I think you've been in touch with him since I sent that email, right?
Yeah. We, and we've, we've refined our capital improvement plan based on the two evaluations that we recently completed, one for wastewater and one for the water treatment side. So we have a good long-range plan for each of those and have good, we feel like good cost estimates associated with that. So we've refined our cost, our capital improvement plan. Over the next five to seven years, we, we have a good idea from a capital standpoint what is needed to stay in, in line with that plan. And then we provided all that information to Jason and his team, along with our existing revenue and sales information. And we're going to have to come up with a rate design that can match then the new revenue with that proposed capital improvement plan. And it would probably need to happen over time. We're not going to do everything we need to do in one year and get to the rates to that level. So I think for this budget year, as a placeholder, what we had is a million of new revenue because we knew that we had some big capital expenses coming up in the next, in the next year. But that is truly just a placeholder until Jason's there.
And how did, how did the grants that you've recently received impact that?
That's right. And so we have built in, when we did our capital improvement, we made an assumption that we would get so much percentage funded via grants. And we did that because we don't know. We have a lot of hooks in the water that's related to grants. We don't know how successful here lately in the last week. We've been very successful. What does that look like over time? We don't know. I think we put a 10 or 15% success rate on grants funding our capital. And obviously you can change that depending. But that is built into the plan. It will be built into the rate design. And we'll, we'll present all those assumptions of what that capital improvement plan looks like. And then the other piece that Alden Sisstron mentioned is, just compared to this new software, we're tracking our operation and maintenance expenses much better and categorizing those to appropriate service. So in other words, we'll know really better how much it costs to produce and treat and distribute a gallon of water. And does that need to be different than collecting, conveying, and treating a gallon of wastewater? I'm going, I'm going to say that those need to be different. Right now, the rates are the same for simplicity. But what we are seeing from a capital standpoint and also from an O and M standpoint is the cost of sewer is more than water. Water is subsidizing wastewater. And so in, in, you'll see that in the future as a recommendation to really make those rates match those different services appropriately so they can kind of stand on their own, if they will. So look for that in the very near future. Then on the, on the water and wastewater side, that's kind of where we are. We're working and, and hoping and pushing Jason as, as quickly as we can to bring those recommendations to you guys. And then, is it okay if I talk just briefly on the electric side?
Mm-hmm.
Right now, TBA is, is expected to do another five and a quarter wholesale increase. They, they are projecting that that will be approved at their August board meeting and go into effect in October, similar to last year. That does not mean that the end user, end retail user is going to experience a five and a quarter. It winds up being around 3.2% for the in-average residential user. And we're also recommending a 2% increase on the average residential simply for O and M increases that we're experiencing right now. So end result, and I'll be happy to provide all this when I do the full rate discussion. But that is, that is a placeholder right now on the current budget.
But those can be done, those can be done outside of this, this particular cycle.
I want to ask a real long question. Do we have to approve his budget by September 30 like we do to the general fund budget?
We do. There's a, September 15.
September 15.
But, but we have a lot more flexibility with, with his budget in that, again, it's, it's an enterprise fund and we can adjust rates as, as the year goes along.
But you are prepared for us to adopt your budget as well?
We have both of those electric increases proposed in the, in the current drought. And then the water is kind of more to be, more icon, to be in.
Time we get into September, excuse me. You'll have built in whatever you feel like you're going to have to have by working with Jason and what you, and y'all plugging in numbers for that capital improvements and all the operational stuff that, that the increase you're going to need on the water source side. Are you going, at that point, will you differentiate between the, the actual cost now of water, you know, distribution versus collecting and treating sewers? Will that, will that be reflected by the budget time or is that something you're just going to develop as, as we go on?
I think we have a real clear picture of what that capital looks like for each of those different services. The O and M is, I think if we can get through a year within this current financial system, we'll have it much clearer. But my thought is, we know that the rates need to increase to, to at least just cover these capital expenditures that have been outlined in the plan. And so my thought is, let's stair-step this over time and get to the rate where we need it to be. And this will be just a first step in trying to ramp that up.
And while we're at it, we did, we did receive word that we got $6 million. So the next time y'all see Congressman Guest, would you please give him a great big hug and tell him thank you because we have- and tell him thank you, because we have an opportunity to use that for our water infrastructure issues. So, we were, I got notified of that driving back from a, from a meeting on Wednesday. So, it's pretty exciting that we are, we are being the recipient of a number of, of federal grants that are coming our way. It's very helpful to us, particularly with things that are important, like the infrastructure. So, pretty excited about that. So, any other questions, discussions, other than what do we want to fill in? What do we wanna do? Is there support for doing, what, point two-five, roughly? If you take that hundred and forty out, because we're delaying, just by, by virtue of the operations, delaying the ability to hire, delaying the ability to receive the cameras and that sort of thing? Do you think it'll take a, a full year to get all the cameras that are anticipated up? Or do you think it'll take longer? Or what's your thought, Joel?
So, we're talking about forty-one cameras total. And so, twenty cameras a year, I think is a good rate for us to accomplish that documentation. So, I think that's something we can, we can accomplish.
Okay. So, that, that removal of that hundred and forty makes, makes sense? Okay, all right. Thoughts? Alderman, on? I know, I'm calling you out, all right, sweetie? This is one of those big discussions where we need to, we need to talk.
I do wanna say something. What scares me about cutting the camera budget is if Chief Pollard can't get the officers he needs to fully staff, with those cameras offset not having the people as far as security goes?
Well, I bet.
What it helps, I guess, about-
He can, he can get the position, you can get the, you don't anticipate having a problem actually getting personnel to do this work, right?
No, I'm not, I'm talking about officers that are actually patrolling.
I understand what you're asking.
If he can't keep, how many do you have? Seventy?
Well, we're at seventy-five, we're probably at sixty-five, sixty-six.
Come on, we can see, see, please.
I'm sorry, we're, we're probably at seventy-five, we're at seventy-five, we're at sixty-five, sixty-six on the books right now after August 6. We anticipate, again, we, we've been hiring, they've been hiring, so we should hit that mark this fiscal year, being fully staffed, and have, and I would plant a flag on it when we get there, that's for sure.
I was saying, if he doesn't have as many people patrolling, that would the cameras be an asset to have to cover?
I think they let you, I think they let your people cover more territory, be more efficient, having, having the cameras that does that.
Is your, is your personnel services part of your budget? Does that reflect that bringing, being able to hire the rest of these people, bringing them in? I mean, you have, you'll have the money to do that. If you fire ten more, fire policemen, you could do that. You budget, you got the money built in your budget to do that?
I believe we do, yes, sir.
So, that wouldn't be an, that wouldn't be an interim increase, but-
Yes, sir. I believe, I believe you quit. Or did you?
I did, I just kinda faded.
You did kinda fade on me. Yes, sir.
Well, yeah, and I, I've said publicly I'd support funding these cameras, and I, I certainly will, this is the way I think we should do it. But I think we're so close to having a budget without a tax increase, just wondering if we can't find that quarter mils in there, because we're gonna have to come back somewhere down the road, and it's gonna be what you did last year, this year, so we could skate by it.
I know we found twenty. I know, I know we found twenty. Mayor didn't let me say that.
I know. No, you break it up, I'm the one that, I, I will disagree. Both our positions have been made known.
Build Mississippi State for the full cost of Bulldog Bash, like they would build us for the full cost of anything we did on their campus. It's just good business. We don't owe Mississippi State a fair twenty thousand dollar favor. I love Mississippi State, and they are our economy. Jordan got it. I mean, everything about Mississippi State is great, but when it comes time for us, for us to accommodate their, their function in downtown Starville, and police it, have emergency trucks there, cleaning it up, all the stuff that goes on, and we determined, and our department has determined, cost a little over forty, it's almost forty-one thousand dollars to do that, they should get built forty-one thousand, or whatever it is, not twenty thousand, or not twenty-five thousand, forty thousand. I mean, that's their event. And I, I know that I get brought, gets brought, well, how much it benefits Starville? It does benefit Starville. It's still an event that we are hosting for them, and we, we incur costs, and our taxpayers incur costs to host this. And we need to build for the full amount. Now, that's twenty, we're, right now, we've budgeted twenty, we pay twenty-five, and they pay twenty, or twenty-two.
Well, no, it was fifty-fifty split.
And we put twenty thousand more in that, now that's sixty-six thousand. And, and I promise you, they're not gonna quit having Bulldog Bash, they're just gonna write a check for forty thousand dollars.
I, I think this is, I think this is a bigger question that you're talking about there, because I think when you start charging them fully, you, you have to start looking at every event that happens in, in the city, whether it's Bulldog Bash, or the Arts Festival, or Juneteenth, or Unwind Downtown, where there's some additional cost related to sanitation, picking things up. I, I think you have to start looking at, are you going to use the same cost recovery method for everything? The, the reason I wouldn't budget fully for it is, in order to budget it, we have to be able to quantify it, and we have to be able to reasonably expect that we're gonna receive it in the, in, in the year. So, which is why we don't budget grants until we have documentation in, in hand. If we, if we go to MSU, and you say they're not gonna move Bulldog Bash, and they may or they may not, I don't know. But, but they could move it, and that puts us into that, how much do you wanna bet that, that they're gonna have it here? They have moved it onto campus. They may move it back to campus again, so.
Oh, they moved it over here for reach, they can't handle it. That's, that's perplexing. I will say this too, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
A previous administration before you were mayor, got the form of a change for how that, that food and beverage money is distributed in the city of Starville, to favor significantly Mississippi State's Student Association in, in the cut of that food and beverage money. And they were, that's the difference, and you asked me the difference between what that and what's the thing in the Cotton District Office of, is that the Student Association have a half million dollar brand-new money every year, of which they budget this function, paying bands and putting this, this stuff on, that kind of thing. So, they have the money to pay it. We're just not asking them to pay what they, we're gonna fully incur from, from our, you know, the city side to host this, and we should do that. They have the money to pay it.
Well, I mean-
Now, that's twenty thousand.
You, you, yeah, you and I both share different opinions on this, but I get it. All the way up, I saw your, we'll wave there, so.
Yeah, well, and I, I'm remiss for not saying I appreciate all the work that went into this.
And, and lots of work, department heads, Webb and Lisa, couple of Aldermen sat in on some of the meetings, so, so. I think that we have, I think that we have-
What's a quarter mil? I mean, it's a-
About eighty-five thousand dollars. So, so, we, we tried to be reasonable in our estimates for both revenues and expenses. And I'll be, I'll be honest, we have been pretty aggressive in what we've budgeted for sales tax. We did that a couple of years ago, and we missed our number big time, so.
So, why, why are we doing it now?
Why are we doing it? We think, we think, we think we know where that additional revenue is gonna come from. In the previous year, when we did it, didn't wanna have a tax increase, we were basing it on trends, and then the trend didn't hold. So, we've-
Sales tax went flat, basically.
So, this, this year, we, we have a, a limited growth number in there, and then we've got a projection for-
What's our percentage of, of estimated growth of our retail sales?
This is based on the TIF, getting that, getting the money from, from the triangle across that period.
This is, this is about, this is between six and seven.
How long will that, how long do you originally think that'll last before Mark Casper asked us to issue tip laws, and that money goes away?
This coming year.
We'll have one year of that. And then, we place fifty percent sales tax and all the increment on the abole tax, correct?
And the county.
Well, we're also banking on-
They place all the abole tax.
Banking on Ms. Kelly selling, selling much furniture, so.
But, but what we gotta remember about Ms. Kelly was, we had, that's like one of the hotels, you go in, it's got the revolving door. Ms. Kelly's coming in, at first store, wearing the new shops, and they're going out at the same time.
Different, different.
And I, well, that's-
Well, it's not just, it's not because of that, because I went in the store.
It might've been because twenty-dollar foot rent, and can't pay the rent.
Yeah, it was other issues.
But they also seen him writing on the wall, too. I mean, I mean, there's some of that going on, so. But, we make up this eighty-six thousand dollars.
Tell me where, and, and, and you've got until, I guess, Tuesday to, to do that. But I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable in changing revenue numbers, so I think you're gonna have to focus on the expense side.
Could we delay implementing the raises?
Well, I mean, you can, certainly. We've done it before. We've done it till half-year, or, or what, January? We did it one time for January, we did it one time till April, I think, so.
And, and I know that, I know that, and, and Mr. Ashford can maybe help with this, but I know that last year, there were people making decisions about whether they were gonna stay with us or move somewhere else. And, and one of the things that was factored into that was, what were we gonna do about raises?
You can go to Mississippi State and find the same thing. I hear professors making X, saying if I go to LSU, I make X, and we'll never win that arms race. Starville's not gonna win that arms race.
Well, that's, that's-
And I would also say that this is one reason I didn't wanna give the whole package to Ms. Kelly, because that student maybe ten grand or something on, or the whole walk.
Well, we, we-
We have it.
Funny story about that, we can't abate the full amount, so it's just the incremental amount.
So, it's about, so it's about eighteen thousand.
Yeah, it was, it was never gonna be more than thirty, so it's only about eighteen.
Now, we made it half, made eighteen Bulldog Bash, now you have, now you're down to four.
That's already, that's already baked in here. That's already baked.
But going forward as a board, I think, and I know it's too late to do it this year, but we need to look at other ways for cost recovery, like special events, charging for special events, doesn't have to be the full amount, but just, anything is better than nothing. I'm not talking about downtown, hence twenty thousand, but just events in general.
Well, I'm staying-
Different ways.
Chief Ballard, I mean, we put stuff on the table, I mean, the, the counties won't pick it off our police officers, right?
Well, of recently, two of them just served up.
Well, and I, I'll say this, I mean, I don't know what, they're not doing on their side, in their accounting side, but if we're a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year short on, on that, that half, that one half of that, that assessed money for, you know, paving, supposed to go for road, bridges, side city limits, is that, is that built?
That's been resolved. That's built in.
It's built into this, okay. So, that's what we're gonna, but that's, you know, now we gonna, are we gonna build for back?
We are.
I think we should be able to find it. I think we just, we need to consider that our citizens, that we should be able to find eighty thousand dollars. I said I'd support the cameras, and I will, but I think we're so close to doing that, I think it's, it would send a message that we could do it if each department did.
Right, we ate sixty thousand short in a thirty million dollar budget, we'll have to find it. What, how many years if we increased abole taxes? How many years would this be in a row?
One, two.
This would be third.
This would be second in a row.
This would be the second in a row.
I thought we went from third to thirty, and then thirty.
No, we skipped a year.
We went to-
We went from thirty point one-three last year to thirty-two.
But we skipped the year before, but the year before, we had a tax increase. So, I thought you just be three years.
No.
I mean, I think, I think we're closing up, we need to balance the budget, and not raise the rest of that.
Okay, well-
I wouldn't do that.
As, as we know, there are areas where we have seen the changes and the increases, and I will tell you that the Budget Committee, which, the folks who worked on the budget, and you were in the room, there were two of them, you can sit, you can, should be able to vouch for the fact that the, the folks looked closely at what they were doing, they, they are not being, when I say folks, I mean the department heads, are not being greedy in asking for the things that they're asking for. They're asking for things that are like, things that are outdated in their, in their age, that we're limping along with, for example. So, we're not gonna, coming in and asking for anything massive and new, other than the cameras and-
And the time, forty for twenty cameras?
Roughly.
So, why don't we do ten cameras? That's ten we didn't have before, and we saved seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, we can do it that way if you want to, but that's a, you know, that's up to the board. As a, as a whole, that's a proposal. So, let's, let's flesh that out a little further, Joel. Have you talked to, is it, it's not Security Solutions on this one, it's another provider, right?
So, we're talking to a couple of our vendors to get, to get prices, because with a purchase this large, we'll have to bid that out potentially, so. We'll need to, obviously, we like to get quotes anyway, but they both come in around the same cost, about five thousand per unit, for the physical unit, and then, of course, like we talked about, there's an ongoing cost related to-
Right, I wasn't thinking about the cost, I was thinking more of the delivery opportunity. Have you talked to them about, from a delivery standpoint?
Right. And so, the, the forty-one total number is really driven by police tech, and that's areas that they wanted covered.
Right.
So, that was the holistic approach. And so, when we talked about breaking it down into twenty per year, it was more like, what can we consume? What can we, not only get delivery up, but what can we get hung up and connected and do everything that we need to do? And that's probably about what we could handle in a year. So, anything less than that, a more metered-out approach is certainly, you know, something we can, we can talk about, and that would, that would obviously trigger some cost savings initially.
Have you, have you discussed with the providers, their, their ability to, to deliver actually twenty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they are capable of-
They're standing ready to deliver.
They are standing ready. Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to determine, is if that was still quasi-open the air, if that was a aspirational number, or if that was a-
Oh, no, ma'am, that, that never does.
That was, that was a solid number? Okay.
So, what is that? Where are we going with that?
We could eliminate the building fund.
The fifty grand.
I was gonna, I was, I forgot, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that.
We can eliminate.
Well, they have, maybe do fifteen cameras.
What, what'd you put?
No, but if we do the fifty-
Fifty, that gets-
There's fifty in there for the building fund?
And how much are we short now?
The fifties in there?
We're so close to nine raises.
Thirty-six, depending on what we do.
I know it's gonna be hard, but we-
You take the fifty from the, from the building fund, I'm perfectly good with that. Okay. So, fifty out of that? All right. What else can we find? Because I'm, I'm not gonna agree with that yet, until the entire board weighs in on the charging, charging Bulldog Bash. I think we oughta, I think we oughta find-
Until you, until somebody from the university agrees to it, I'm not gonna support changing it in the budget either, because I, again, quantifiable and reasonably collectible.
And how much do we increase the bill by fifty? By actually fifty?
Fifty.
Okay, well, now, I can give back what I was gonna give back anyway. We hadn't counted it in, did we?
What was that?
My salary piece? Did we count that in? So, there you go, there's probably the rest of it.
And that's, and don't, I don't forget, if we're aggressive with that retail sales stuff, we can have one, we can have one month that goes silent.
We could.
And it'll, you know, it'll-
We could.
Well, let's see, I think we're close, right? We got the building fund, you say we found the eighty?
Fifty. We found fifty of the eighty-five, eighty-six.
He hadn't counted that, he didn't stand his salary.
I don't know. I don't mind.
But he says it's not counted.
He's not counting, so it's counted. Which is what he talked about. He didn't count it.
He didn't give it back, but it, just in terms of numbers, it's there.
Well, that gets us there.
Well, it does, but it's not on paper.
All right. Now, how much is built in?
We don't typically budget the revenue expense for it, so.
So how would we do that? Because I think.
Well, it's not, it's not built in, but you can.
Because it's typically been restricted. And so it wouldn't go into the general fund anyway.
How much have we built in on parks and rec side additional revenue that comes from general revenue, revenue? It's not coming from food and beverage revenue. Because I saw back when we were having those, while we sat on these, that we had projected well hardly any increase in 2%, 2% food and beverage. It was like 300 or 315 or something like that thousand. But then yet, the parks and rec part of general fund contribution to it was going to be 180, 190,000 additional. Where's that money coming from?
That's in that sales tax number. That's in that sales tax number.
Say it again.
We may be talking about two different things.
He's talking about food and beverage. You're talking about sales tax.
I'm talking about the food and beverage tax that we projected, now revenue.
We bumped, we bumped that number up.
To what?
310, 315.
320 at the moment.
So 20,000 or so. But we're showing an additional expenditure in parks and rec where we got to contribute from the general fund, which I would have thought would have come from food, increased food and beverage projected money, but it's not 180 or 190, 192. Is that in my?
Um, thing about parks is, is the budget of 1.5 for this year is probably going to hit about 1.6 by the end. So we're not really increasing it by that much when you look at the budget because we're going to.
You're under, you're under shooting revenue projections for parks and rec, is what you're saying?
What's going into a shooting of costs?
It's the cost of buying.
We're going to have to make up the difference in costs. So we've got it, you know, it won't be a problem to make up the difference in other areas.
But is that, does that makeup in that cost come from the monies that we use for general operating, that we come for general operating purposes like sales tax and average tax?
Yes.
Come from the general fund, yes.
It comes from the general.
So we're supplementing, parks and rec will, if, if these projections you're talking about hold by just under 200,000 from general monies. Now, that's somewhere that, I mean, I don't know. That's $190,000 that's got some flexibility to me in it, that if you get down to within 25, 30,000 dollars, say, okay, we just predict, we, we, we're going to contribute 150,000 more or something. Let's make that budget work to 150,000 and 190,000, 180, or 200,000 or something like that. And that money goes in to take, to come off at 86,000.
And it's, and it's easy to change the number on here. It's easy to change the number on here. We can, we can change the board of. Yeah, we can change the Board of Alderman number on here for salaries. But the truth of the matter is, when, when the bills are paid, the numbers are going to be what the numbers are going to be.
We're contractually obligated to pay that.
We are contractually obligated to pay some of these things.
Let me, let me ask the board this. We got 50,000 for the building fund. Cameras look like they're seven grand a piece. Would the board consider 15 cameras instead of 20? Because that gets us 35,000 to add to the 50,000. And then we can do this without a tax increase, get 15 cameras we never had and get us with a balanced budget.
We can find it somewhere else. We need, go ahead and do those cameras, get it done.
What you going to face next year, next year's next year. What you going to find?
You're just continually kicking that can down.
Right. And you're going to face $400,000, potentially less, sales tax revenue on Castle Bridge, tip kicks in and we got to start servicing debt on those tip bonds, trying to shop and so on. So that's money in setting and sales tax is going to go away. But right now, we, we hadn't had it because they didn't tell us they were getting it. What do y'all call that thing? What they got?
Mirror.
And they got all, they got the state's portion and our portion too. And we, did they tell us they were doing that?
It's, it's in the documents.
Oh, anyway, that, that money, what, that's going to be there for one year, Jeffrey.
We will continue, we will continue to collect that money. We will continue to collect.
Just pass through our hands and go to services.
It will pass through our hands and go to a debt service account. So we'll recognize the revenue, but we'll have an additional expense for the, the bond payment.
You have it, but you don't have it.
Sure.
Sure.
I got a raise, but I got a house payment.
We closed.
We did add, we did add $25,000 for litigation expense, given some of the court cases that we have pending in front of us. We could.
Think they'll run that much?
Talking about wastewater suit?
That's coming out of, no, that comes out.
This is just.
General fund.
This would be other, other legal cases.
Not electric, not water, not.
What do I look? I can think of one. I might want to say the state. Mayor knows a lot about, and she, she knows about it.
Think of two that got continued recently.
Yep.
Give me, give me a half a minute. I'll tell you what, it's been running. We thought it was going to be higher because we do have some litigation out there, but if you'll give me a minute. Have you got your detailed?
We're going to pro bono work there for us.
That's how it would.
That's right.
Thank you.
But we can, I feel sure we can nickel and dime it away and then if, if it comes up, then we'll have to adjust.
That's right. And that's why you'll wind up with those budget amendments next year. We sat here, we agreed, blah, 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 and then we find out we're wrong.
So. Well, and who knows? Our, our sales tax may be.
Maybe.
I'm sorry? Yeah. We, these are, these are numbers that can be adjusted. So if we want, if we want to do that, then we can, we can play with the numbers and make it work that way and then adjust it as we need to. We just have, still got to stay within the.
Oh, you want from us is kind of an ups or downs, well, we're going to raise tax.
Yeah.
And I'm good with raising taxes a quarter.
We got, we noticed just already, we got the seatbelt grant. And we'll get on the version five.
Okay.
And probably take it up to 10.
Okay.
And collections this year so far is 8,400 reimbursement from that.
Okay.
And that could be a little five because we just have to.
And, and I'd like to be, I'd like to, I'd like to be on record saying that I'm okay with a quarter of a mil tax increase and not have to fret as much next year over $85,000 during the year. I'd, I'd rather just go ahead and get it out of the way, but, but I'm one vote out of seven, so.
Here's something, I'm sorry. Will it include the employee raises?
Yes.
Yes.
We're absolutely, and, and despite Alderman Rupp's desire to delay them or offer.
He didn't say design.
Okay.
It's a little strong.
His, all right, his suggestion that delaying them, I think we ought to do them on October 1.
I think we'd go and balance the budget based on this conversation.
What you finding?
I'm sorry.
Okay. What you finding with that, with the taxes?
Something else, Mayor, the, if you could look at our contemporaries, let's say towns with 25, 30,000 population in state.
Yes.
And Clintons, Vicksburgs, Law's.
I have a whole list and we are.
A whole list, they're about our side of the country.
We are fifth lowest in the state.
As the average tax millage rate, our assessed value of property here is, I, I would say, I would say, well, yeah, it's significantly higher. This is our.
No.
No, it's not.
No.
Don't look at your tax card. We don't get anything. The city hardly gets any.
I'm talking about what, what people's property is assessed.
No.
No.
That's incorrect.
Take a house in Clinton, take a house here and see which, which one, what they're on tax.
If you look, if you look at those, and we looked at that last year and I didn't bring it with me this year, but if you look at what percentage of their revenues come from property taxes versus sales taxes, we're still on the low end of all that.
I'm not talking about what percentage of one person, I'm talking about what assessed rate and what it develops in Clinton, say, or use Clinton for example, based on their real property assessed value in that city versus what it does here with the same number of household and that kind of stuff. And they, they just, their property says, our property says the higher rate of.
I pulled my tax card and I've, my property tax on my house is $1,900. Do you know how much the city gets out of that 1,900? $412.
It's right.
County and school board.
It's the assessed value. He's talking about it.
I know. It was assessed at 85,000.
And if you say, when we say 35 mils, we're at 30, whatever we are here, 31.
32.
32 mils here. And Clint's at 36 mils, whatever they are, 37 mils. And we're under, we need to be charging what Clinton charges. We not, we necessarily need to be paying charge what Clint's charged because they're down there, the house is not assessed and, and, you know, not praised and assessed the same value. It's a price that here. That's what I'm talking about.
And that's not, that's not under our control.
But I'm just saying, but I'm just saying, if you're looking at what citizens are having to pay in the tax burden here versus what they pay in Law and Vicksburg or Clinton, the taxes here are pretty high for, and you, and you can't just say what city. We got county school taxes and the total.
We can't control them.
We can't control them, but what, but when I get a tax bill, I get a tax bill for all three of them. It's almost 150 mils. It's, it's 140, 50 mils in Hines County for the city of Clinton and over in Warren County for some, but it's just, they don't generate as much revenue on their, on their stuff over there as we do here because our stuff is assessed at a higher value. Not, and you say, well, residential, you take commercial property here versus commercial property, say in Clinton or something, see what the difference is. It's significant. And so I'm just saying that our 31 mils here may be generating, you know, as much as a city with the same size population needs, street grid, all that kind of stuff as, as Clinton or Vicksburg or Law or somewhere like that. We, we, we don't, we don't place our average loan tax rate equal everybody else's because everybody else is charging X because we need to look and see, what is our tax burden on our, on our citizens?
And we don't do that. We set our tax burden based on what we need for operations and, and, and it shakes out that it is what it is and that we are among the lower millages that are, that are out there.
And what's, and what's important to us, I mean, what's important to us comes, is directly here in this budget. It's what we value and what we spend money on. And we're doing it, we're doing public safety, fire and police, and then we're doing parks. And that's, that is who we are and what we're trying to do for our community. So I have, I have, make no apologies for our tax rate nor for what we do with, with the tax dollars that we get. We are not Clinton, we are not Oxford, we're not Vicksburg. And I think that we are doing the most with the, with the least most of the time, that we are not overspending, we are not being extravagant in what we do, and we are accomplishing the goals that the residents expect us to accomplish.
I'm not, I have no argument with you on that. I would, I will say this, I've heard, I've, I've heard it said in board meetings that because some other places are comparisons, like a comparative of water sewer rates, you know, and it, and it really does take the same degenerate, you know, in, you know, Star was it does, and Dixburg or Clinton aware, you know, to, to treat, to pump, treat water and treat sewer and stuff like that. But if, if other place, all other seven, eight places we look at have 30, have 35, 36 mil average loan tax, municipal average loan tax rate, that doesn't mean we supposed to have 35 or 36 mils to keep up with them because if we get to that rate, we probably, when the person gets a tax bill here, they probably paying more tax here than they paying in Clinton or Vicksburg. I'd almost guarantee you that, because the valuation, the starting point for that person, that property in Clinton or Vicksburg is probably not as high as it is here.
Well, and we, and we don't look at it with that in mind, I always, I certainly don't look at it with that in mind. What I look at in, in mind is what we want to do with what we're, what we're capturing, what we're, what we're getting in our, in our revenue.
That is always.
And what are we going to do with it? But just out of curiosity, I'm going to go do some research and we'll see where we are.
What you say we write there with municipality equivalent to the same?
We're, we're the fifth lowest in the state with populations.
For the city, for the city. And we cannot control county and, and school board.
Columbus has a 50 mil, 54 mil actually, average loan. And that's Columbus, not Loudoun County.
City.
It's Columbus, the city. And that's not counting their school and their, and they count. So anyway.
Get this, let me herd these cats back up here into the middle.
Well, this is a good discussion.
So my blood pressure's going up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, that case.
So, so we're going to reduce the camera and, and the police chief is over there. I think we were about.
No, wait a minute.
We're going to reduce that from 100, from 280 down to 140.
Oh, okay. Yes.
So we're still. Phasing, phasing that in. We're going to take out the $50,000 for capital expenses. So when we have to pay for something with the elevator next, next year, don't, don't say, why aren't we budgeting for that each year? We're not budgeting for it because we're not raising taxes. So we're going to take out that 50,000. We're going to take out $25,000 for the legal fees.
75,000.
That's 75. Lisa's got.
I need a number to the Bulldog Bash person, just in case.
Well. We're going to take five for the DUI grant, which is coming in subsequent. Right, right. We're going to seatbelt grant, seatbelt grant. We're going to add five for the seatbelt grant and we will find the other five somewhere.
Okay.
I may throw it in the sales tax.
All right. So that puts us, that puts us at no, no increase.
But it is, but it is, I, it is, we don't have any margins for error. We don't have any margins for error. We don't have any, we don't have any margins for new things that come up next year.
I will say this, because my Bulldog Bash thing's getting a bit of bug jokes in this, at this table, and I will say this, and I will say this every time one of these new tests comes up, somebody comes across and says, I can't do this unless I get a tax incentive from the city. And we, and then we pitch away and give those tax incentives, oh, and there's more coming down the pipe because it's, it's right now. Oh, yeah. And then when we do that, we're giving our tax money away. And when, when tax, when budgeting, and we are, there's, the thing on the books with, with the man over here, the, the furniture store, that's a gift. That's $18,000. That money was on the books. We about to collect that money and that'd been part of the revenue in this thing right here. And.
You're making, you're making an assumption there that.
I said, they couldn't rent a Miss K, I mean.
You're making an assumption that that wouldn't have happened. You're making an assumption that the triangle crossing would have developed at the time that it developed. And, and those are things that you can't know.
$18,000 difference in Miss K that coming in and not coming over here.
He said it made a difference.
But anyway.
Well, anyway, that's water under the bridge. It's, it's, it's a done deal. Well, anyway, that's water under the bridge, it's, it's, it's a done deal, and I, I will look for it. If we get, I will tell you now, if something happens, and we have big blank piece of property that's not yielding us anything at all, and somebody wants to bring in a massive project, I would certainly recommend to this board to consider a tip again, so. Anyway, it just, it just depends on what they bring to the table, so, but we don't have anything right now, so.
So, we found the money, that's okay.
Well, we, we, yes, we squeezed. Squeezed and shifted, squeezed and shifted.
What you told Jeff on the bank?
I'm gonna pay, I'm gonna pay, I'm gonna-
No question about it.
Mr., I see the value of it, and I'm willing to support it when the time comes.
We did, we got where we went, we needed to be.
Okay, all right, two sets, two sets of minutes, so, anything, Mr. Huskison or Ms. Harden, we're good? Consent, consent to those?
Consent.
All right. I'm sure there'll be some comments to be made, but we'll, we'll leave them at that. No introductions, correct? Still no introduction, okay. And this will be the first public hearing on the ordinance regarding the criminal ordering and aggressive solicitation. This will be one of two, so the next one will come when we will have consideration of that one next time around, so. And I have not heard anything from anyone necessarily about it, so we'll see if the public has an interest in talking to us on it. Okay, so, let me see if I can give some direction here. So, 21-19-11 is, is, it's a tough statute, guys, and so, this is, in, in doing some research, further research on it, the, there is a section in 21-19-11 that lets us have an expedited process, but in order to do that, you gotta do a couple of things, and A is one of the things that we need to do, which is designating the mayor, I, I selected the mayor, and that doesn't mean me, that means the position of mayor, and the building official, which doesn't mean steen necessarily, but right now it is, and then the code enforcement sergeant as authorized representatives under this 21-19-11 to, sub two, to provide an expedited seven day process for cleanup of properties as defined in the code section, which is basically nuisance properties that have trash and mowing. So, the declaration can come, but prior to that, we were having like a fourteen day timeline, so this can be done a little more expeditiously. It comes to the board, the board says, yes, good to go, and, and I'll give credit where credit is due, which is to Tupelo, because they have a really nice process in place that follows this fairly well, and so, that's what I'm trying to do, is put this in an expedited position. So, this would be designating the position of mayor, the position of building official, and the code enforcement sergeant as the authorized representatives to say, yes, this is a property that needs to come before the board, bang, you do it, and we go out and mow it the next day, basically, so.
I'm not gonna give you a weapon, right?
No, I don't think so. But that could be fun. Put a weed eater in my hand? No, I don't think so, but that's, that's what this is about, so, just as an explanation.
We're just leaving off the same, I'm, I'm-
That's fine, no.
We're just leaving off the same.
Sure. And then, the second one is, we have liens that have been, that we have already approved, or dilapidated properties that have, we have already approved, that have been leaned, and now we need to pass a resolution that supports those liens, and that's all in the packet, so, that's it.
Maybe that one too.
Okay. More business, we've got the Declaration of Pilcher Street, that's a reconsideration. I'm, I believe they have been making progress, but I expect them to come forward, so we'll leave that one off as well. Consideration for calling a public hearing on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget and tax millage, that, surely we can make that a C, because we might have to call for it when you slice it, so.
Now, that's not gonna be on, is it?
Why can't we put it on consent? If we're gonna have, we're gonna have to call for it, it's just a call for, with the, with the paperwork.
Consent.
Okay. Advertising for bids for the thirty-ton HBAC unit for the Starkville, October Hall County Public Library.
Can I say something about that? There was an inference made a while ago, that, and I was the one suggesting we start capital fund for that thing. City's at sixty years to start to have some kind of fund for the building, and, and I'm not gonna get labeled a person that didn't start this year, because fifty-nine years prior to that, nobody did any-
We, we were going to start it this year, you're the person, you're the person that has delayed it another year.
I would have, I would have made it.
You're the person who's delayed it another year.
I have not delayed, if you, if you asked for it last year, the year before, I would have supported that.
Just joking with you, Ham.
So, that's just the way-
Don't be, don't be salty, don't be greedy. All right, consent on this one. All right, under airport, this is an insurance renewal, forks for consent, I would think, okay. If they're, if, Mr., there you are, I thought I had seen you, anything in here that is, that we should be highlighted, anything in here that, okay, all right, so we'll continue on down the line. We've got a John Deere zero turn for mowing the grounds, right? Consent for that one, okay? And then we, we're purchasing the vehicle for, for a, is a courtesy car, which apparently right now, they're like driving around with something that's three hundred years old and the tires are out, so, consent for that one.
So, this was cheaper than new tires.
Yes, right. Well, they never sure it'll crank, I think when they, when they put the key in the ignition, which is a key, not a button anymore. And then the multimodal grant, and did we get the amounts, the, okay, the, the one forty-six four to be shared by MSU, October Hall County and the city, so.
And when we say those are to be shared, those are to be shared through that year end settlement, right? Not, not these specific amounts.
They will fill about for any-
Until, until.
July difference.
Okay, all right, and then we have the final plat approval for St. Joseph's Campus, anything we, excuse me, need to know about that, Mr. Havlin?
Church has a lot of other properties in the area, this is combined, and I don't know the point, they're working on a master plan to kind of do all their future developments, and actually have the project coming forward pretty quickly. The two lots that are left fall from the new house that are hurt, but it's all the stuff you gotta consider, the church property is combined.
Okay, and there was no pushback from anyone?
Yeah.
Consent for that one?
Consent.
All righty, and under engineering, Mr. Burnett is on vacation, but we do have help here if we need it. This is the final safe streets and roads for all comprehensive safety action plan, which is what, I think two hundred pages or something, something like that, so I personally am not going to read it, but if y'all would like to do so in Holdover for some reason before we talk about-
I've read about a third of it.
Well, I know, it's hard reading, so, any reason to not consent on consent? Okay, all right. And declaring a, forward a surplus in, in auctioneering gov deals, consent for that one. Permission to advertise for qualifications, our queues for engineering master service